Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission on Facebook as well. And we are live and want to encourage you that are listening, as many people as possible, to feel free to share this post. Let me repeat, to share this post on your Facebook page, social media pages, as we talk and explore more about what's taking place with the public hearings that take place tomorrow. I repeat tomorrow for the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission. At this time, I'm going to call your names, and if you can share the outlet that you're with, we would greatly appreciate that for the record. Eric Lloyd.
I am at Nine and Ten News.
Thank you, Eric. Nellie Gaffoon. Hello, Nellie, can you please identify your outlet? All right, Nellie, if you can't identify yourself, or this is for press only, we will have to remove you.
She's with my sister outlet, she's with Mid Michigan Now.
Well, who is she with, so I can understand Rachel, please?
Yeah, Mid Michigan Now.
Thank you very much. Fox Seventeen News, who's here representing? All right, Allison Downhill.
I'm here at the Michigan Advance.
All right, Harold Meeks. Who are you representing, sir? You're on mute.
Representing TellusDetroit.com and Tell us USA News Network.
Thank you very much. Jacob Kanklers.
Hi, I'm representing MERS News in Lansing.
Thank you. Tia Drudgeum. Rachel Just.
I'm with WWMT TV.
Eli Newman.
Hello, I'm with WDP Detroit, NPR station.
Beth LeBlanc.
I'm with the Detroit News.
Clara Hendrickson.
Hi, I'm with the Detroit Free Press.
Ben Solis.
Ben Solis, Gongwa News Service.
Thank you, sorry, Ben, about that. Carol Thompson.
Lansing State Journal.
All right, Lauren Gibbons.
Here with MLive.
And Ellie Myers.
Hi, everyone, I'm with Fox Forty Seven News.
Great, thank you so much for each and every one of you being here. As many of you know, and I can't stress this enough, more than, and I want to repeat that, more than sixty-one percent of Michigan voters intentionally, I want to say this again, intentionally decided that voters, not legislators, not politicians, should take over Michigan's redistricting process. As you know, it's a ballot proposal, you can't vote straight ticket. It has to be an intentional desire of voters, and we are happy that as a result of the intentional desire of voters, the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission came into being. As you know, this is a citizen-led process, a citizen-led process that will identify voting districts as relates to Michigan Congressional, Michigan House, and Michigan Senate. All of our meetings, all of our transactions have to be open and transparent. Our public deliberations, and we have meetings, as you know, on Thursdays, and then these upcoming public hearings will take place starting tomorrow in Jackson and ending Thursday, July first, in Grand Rapids. All the public hearings are at six o'clock PM. Knowing that this is an intentional desire of voters, we have brought together an all-star cast of people to talk about the new redistricting process and what it means for Michigan. Coming up first, the first two presenters will be the Executive Director of the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission, Sue Ann Hammer Smith, and the Vice Chairperson of the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission from Wayne County, Rebecca Zatella. So without further ado, we'll turn it over to Sue and Rebecca at this time, and we will take questions. I mean, Eric, do you have something that you need to know right away, or can we wait?
No, I just raised my hand for later, sorry.
Okay, not a problem. We will open up for questions later with each and every one of our guests who are with us, and Eric, since your hand was up first, I will make sure we ask you first with regards to questions. Okay, without further ado, let's welcome our leader, Sue Ann Hammer Smith. Sue.
Good morning, and thank you for joining us today. As Edward stated, in 2018, Michigan voters took fate into their hands and drastically shifted the redistricting process by adopting Proposal Eighteen-two. Instead of legislators drawing lines for their interests, citizens would draw lines that best represented their interest and respected their historical, cultural, and economic perspectives. Randomly selected from more than nine thousand applicants, the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission, also known as the MICRC, is comprised of thirteen citizens from across the state of Michigan. They include four people who affiliate with the Democratic Party, four who affiliate with the Republican Party, and five independents who do not affiliate with either major party. For the first time in Michigan's history, the MICRC will lead the redistricting process to draw fair and independent maps. The MICRC has the exclusive authority in this new redistricting process. And now I'd like to introduce Rebecca Zatella, Vice Chair of the MICRC.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for attending and listening to us speak this morning. I know some of the questions that we're receiving from the public are, how is the MICRC going to draw the map? What criteria are we using when we're redrawing Michigan's congressional, house, and senate districts? The criteria are ranked in order, and they're delineated for us in the Constitution from one to seven. The first one is we're required to have an equal population and compliance with the Voting Rights Act. We're required to have the districts be geographically contiguous, and by that, it means that you can't have areas that aren't connected together in a single district. So we can't have Traverse City and Detroit connected unless there's a line drawing them together. We have to consider communities of interest. We cannot give a disproportionate advantage to any political party. We also can't favor or disfavor any incumbent elected official or any candidate. We also have to reflect consideration of city, county, and township boundaries in drawing our maps. And then the districts themselves have to be reasonably compact. In terms of why people should be interested in this process, this is an entirely new process for the state of Michigan, and it's a very exciting time. Instead of having legislatures drawing maps, the MICRC empowers the citizens to provide input as to where they think district lines should be drawn to best represent their interests, rather than having politicians draw lines that represent the politicians' interests. The new redistricting process ensures that redistricting occurs in an open and transparent manner with the opportunity for statewide participation. And the communities of interest, for the first time, are going to have a voice to prevent gerrymandering and to prevent the division of neighborhoods for partisan gain, which can harm communities. Edward, I'm going to hand it back over to you at this point.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Zatella. Thank you so much, Sue Hammer Smith, for setting the stage. One of our partners, and we have many statewide partners in the redistricting process, and I just want to just give a shout out to all of our statewide partners. Access, ACLU Michigan, AARP Michigan, APIA, Asian Pacific Islanders Americans Vote Michigan, the Campus Election Engagement Project, the Campus Vote Project, Common Cause, Council of Michigan Foundations, Detroit Hispanic Development Corporation, the Hispanic Latino Commission of Michigan, MH Michigan, Equality Michigan, the Jewish Community Relations Council, American Jewish Committee, the League of Women Voters, Michigan AFL-CIO, Michigan Association of Counties, Michigan Association of School Boards, Michigan Association of United Ways, Michigan Community College Association, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, Aging and Adult Services, Michigan Department of Civil Rights, Michigan Farm Bureau Association, Michigan League of Conservation Voters, excuse me, Michigan Library Association, Michigan Municipal League, Michigan Nonprofit Association, the Michigan State University Extension Centers, Michigan Roundtable for Diversity and Inclusion, Michigan Statewide Independent Living Council, Michigan Township Association, Michigan Voices, NAACP Michigan, Progress Michigan, Small Business Association of Michigan, and Voters Not Politicians for being a communications and outreach effort across the state. If you did not hear your name, and you're a statewide organization, we welcome, let me say it again, we welcome the opportunity for you to join us, and I would encourage you to reach out to me. We want as many statewide organizations that have local affiliates as possible to join us in ensuring that everyone in Michigan is aware of this new redistricting process. I'm really pleased and happy to have Sue Smith of the League of Women Voters, who's done a tremendous job hosting town hall forums all across the state to ensure that Michigan voters are aware of this new redistricting process. Sue is one of the Vice Presidents for the League of Women Voters, and if you have not met her, you have missed meeting a jewel. Sue, thank you so much for being with us, and we'll turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you, Edward, and good morning, everyone. The League of Women Voters has been working for redistricting reform in Michigan since 2011, when the current maps were adopted by the state legislature. I clearly remember ten years ago, when I testified at the Legislative House Elections Committee hearing before the current maps were drawn. The League asked the committee to be transparent and to provide opportunities for meaningful public input before adopting the district maps. Unfortunately, neither of those things happened. There was no transparency and no meaningful public input before the legislature drew and approved the current maps. But now, thanks to the overwhelming passage of Proposal Two in 2018, the redistricting process in Michigan has changed. Now citizens are drawing the maps. There is transparency, and you can participate. The MICRC is asking for our opinions before they draw the maps. This is our chance to have a voice in how the maps are drawn. You don't have to be an expert in drawing maps or in the redistricting process. All you have to do is tell the commission what voting district you think will best represent your interests. There are tools available on the MICRC website, and your local League of Women Voters is ready to help if you contact them. I urge all Michiganders to take advantage of this opportunity by testifying at one of the sixteen public hearings being held across the state during the next two months. If you can't make it to the public hearing in person, you can testify virtually or share your opinions with the commission by using the public comment portal on the MICRC website, or you can mail something to them through the US mail. This is our chance. Let's be sure that our voices are heard. I hope to see you at those public hearings.
Thank you so much, Sue, for those remarks. Grateful to have you and appreciate the partnership as well. Another one of our partners that are with us, as we mentioned, Access, and we have the President and CEO of Access, none other than the distinguished gentleman Hassan Jabbar, who is here with us, and Hassan, we're going to turn it over to you. We want to thank you for your support, and as you come in your own way, to encourage people to get involved in this new redistricting process.
Thank you, Edward, and good morning. This new redistricting process offers underrepresented minorities a historic opportunity to be heard and to advocate for fair and inclusive voting districts. Michigan has the largest concentration of Arab-American population in the country. In fact, Arabic language is the second most spoken language in Michigan, living and making major contributions for our state. Arab-Americans are asking for fair and truly representative redistricting lines. The historical challenge for our nation, and Michigan can take the lead in this effort, is to create an inclusive democracy reflecting the wonderful and rich diversity of our people. This new redistricting process is designed and can only work if we, the people, participate in it and give input to it. It depends on us. Please make this process work. It all depends on us. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Hassan, greatly appreciate that. And we have what we call a stellar presenter in his own right, because, James, you represent so many different interests. You're a Centerville Township Supervisor. You're an organic farmer from northern Michigan, but not also that, you're also a small business. So, James, we're just happy to have you here as a voice of rural communities, as a voice for farmers, as a voice for small businesses, to talk about the importance of this new redistricting process. So, James, without further ado, thank you so much for being with us and lending your voice.
Thanks, Edward. I wrote my notes, rural Michigan often, and I've been just doing this, often feels kind of left out of the processes in Lansing, so these things sort of just happen. And the Redistricting Commission is really offering everybody up north, you know, a real legitimate opportunity to make voices heard about their congressional district, or statehouse, their senate district, and what configuration of those districts would best serve their needs across different parts of the state. I, you know, I'm a retired farmer, but I did farm for twenty years. I've been in township government supervisor for the last six or eight, but in the government for almost thirty years. So, the issues we have often look like the same. I made a note, workforce, housing, broadband is an issue across the state, but how you deal with it rurally is vastly different than how you deal with it, say, in Detroit or Lansing or something like that. And I think, you know, a district impacts how you would deal with that kind of stuff. You know, what communities belong closer together, that sort of thing. So, it's really important for people to get out there and let people know about that. The other thing, as we're making a couple of notes, you know, it's often just thought we're an agricultural economy. You know, I'm outside of Traverse City here in Leona County, but we're high-tech. We have small manufacturing. We have, you know, obviously, a booming tourist industry. And how these things intersect, you know, also is another issue about how the districts are drawn. Because, you know, the group around us versus maybe up in Petoskey, if that's, you know, how does that impact? How do you work together? Is your legislature understanding the intersections of all these things in your communities? Again, the people in those communities need to let the commission know how they see the best way to structure their districts to deal with these kind of intersections. And so, this opportunity to do this is historic, truly. And I'm not, obviously, a public spokesman. I'm good at sitting in a meeting and doing this kind of stuff. I'm really impressed with what we have potential to do. And I'm seeing Eric here, which I was cool. We got somebody from our local press. I hope the press people get out the importance of this and get out the ease that you guys have established also for communicating. You know, our only meeting that I have access to is over in Gaylord, that's two hours away. And that's often an issue in rural part of the state. So, making sure everybody understands they can write, they can email, they can participate. I think these guys are set up to do it by Zoom. There are a lot of opportunities that rural folks can get their voices heard and to not let this opportunity go by. And so, I think that's the nutshell, what I had to say.
Thank you so much, James, for your comments and lending your voice to not just rural, but as a farmer and small business right here in Michigan.
Thanks.
Last but not least, we have the President of the State of Michigan NAACP Chapter, none other than Yvonne White, and we are very happy to have you with us. And Yvonne will let you come in your own way at this time.
Thank you so much, Edward. Good morning, everyone. Yvonne White, President of the Michigan NAACP. I also had the distinct privilege of serving on the NAACP National Board of Directors. As you know, in 2018, Michigan voters took fate into their own hands and drastically shifted the redistricting process by adopting Proposal Eighteen-two. Instead of legislators drawing for their own best interests, citizens will now draw lines to represent their best interest and respect with respect to their historical, cultural, and economic perspectives. For the first time in Michigan history, the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission will lead the redistricting process to draw fair and independent maps. The Commission also has the exclusive authority to redistrict under Article Four, Section Six of the Michigan Constitution of 1963. At the very heart of our freedom is the right to vote. Voting is more than simply going to the polling place on election day. Voting is exercising our individual and collective voices within our democratic system of government. Every ten years, our nation conducts a census to determine the number and location of every person in the United States. This information is used to determine state representation in Congress and within the state legislature. Ultimately, this impacts the distribution of key funds to our cities and local governments. What we know is that within urban communities, it is extremely difficult for the census to provide an accurate count of people who are experiencing social issues such as mental illness, homelessness, complex households, including those with limited families, multi-generations, or non-relatives, cultural and linguistic minorities displaced persons affected by a disaster, and also low-income families, just to name a few. The NAACP's goal is to educate and organize our membership, supporters, and the general public as a whole regarding the power of redistricting. We believe that the Commission hearings will provide specific directions on how to engage all citizens as active stakeholders in the redistricting process and ultimately to exercise their power to elect the representatives of their choice. Our primary focus is to ensure that every community, particularly the Black and Brown communities in which we live, have their voices properly weighed and are not diluted. Every ten years, this census is conducted of its people. We attempt to count all the people in the United States and obtain some basic information about every one of us. This information also has an important impact on our communities, for instance. Inasmuch as millions and billions of federal dollars are sent to state and local governments that are distributed based upon how many people live in various cities or counties of the country. It is important that each community submits accurate census data. For this very reason, the NAACP is a strong advocate of full participation in census process. All governments will turn to the issue of whether they need to redraw the lines of their legislative districts in order to comply with the one-person, one-vote doctrine. In general, this doctrine requires all the districts use to elect members of a particular legislative body that should have approximately the same number of persons living within their boundaries. Redrawing the district lines to meet this population equality standard is called redistricting. However, equality does not mean equity. Due to shifts in populations, boundaries will have to be redrawn for election districts at all levels of government, from congressional and state legislative districts to city, county, and school board districts. In addition to the one-person, one-vote doctrine, all redistricting plans must also comply with the requirements of the 1965 Voting Rights Act and with the protections of the right to vote found in the Fourteenth and Fifteenth Amendments of the United States Constitution. So why is redistricting so important to the NAACP? It's because redistricting determines the boundaries of legislative seats from school boards to the US House of Representatives. The ideology and philosophical views of policymakers in these various legislative seats and of candidates for those seats can influence the type of public policies promoted by legislative bodies. These public policies may affect our health and our welfare or whether students that are unable to attend a public school that supports or rejects the school to prison pipeline. These public policies can change from fair housing to fair employment, from public education to public works, from economic development to community development, and from consumer protection to environmental protection. The right to vote granted African-Americans by the Fifteenth Amendment is too often taken for granted. For Black and Brown people and women living in the Jim Crow South, obtaining and exercising this right was not a battle easily won despite constitutional amendments and federal legislation to effectuate the transition of African-Americans from slaves to citizens. Attempts to disenfranchise and eliminate African-American political involvement has been rampant for over a century. However, we will not remain silent or inaction. Instead, in the face of great personal danger, blacks challenge any and all attempts to eliminate their political vote by persistently voting and by political activism, campaigning, and through independent organizing movements, such as what was just witnessed in the recent Georgia 2021 runoff elections. Through these great campaigns and efforts and political activism, many lives have been lost and many lives have changed thanks to the bravery and willingness of the people to stand and fight for justice. The NAACP believes that all communities of colors must be active participants in the redistricting process. It presents the optimum opportunity to ensure that the interests of our communities are represented on courtroom benches, school boards, city councils, county commissions, board supervisors, state legislators, and in congress. Our representatives who share our communities' interests, values, and beliefs, and who will be accountable to the people. The ability to elect candidates of choice is crucial, and we combat the pathologies in our community and in American society. We are confronted daily with racial profiling, predatory insurance, banking, and real estate practices, school resegregation, and the inequitable funding of urban public school systems. Those who have always offered NAACP's belief in equal opportunity, equal justice, and an integrated society have not altered in our position. These examples only begin to touch upon the deep impact that discriminatory practices and institutionalized racism have on our daily lives. We can best address these and other racial injustices when elected officials represent the true and accurate views of our communities. We must be engaged as stakeholders and policymakers and not bystanders in this democracy. We must continue to our vision and work in protecting several rights for not just our sake, but for the sake of our children and for the sake of the children yet to be born. We do not believe one can learn everything one needs to know about redistricting within these sixteen-schedule hearings. However, what we do expect... However, what we do expect is that those who are involved in the redistricting process will continue to advocate alternative organizations like the NAACP and others involved in redistricting for input and assistance. The NAACP continues to stand ready and willing to assist the commission and the people of Michigan to ensure that every voice is heard, that every vote is counted, and that the will of the people is enforced. We encourage every citizen and organization in Michigan to get involved in the redistricting process and to stand up and be a voice in your community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Yvonne. Appreciate those comments as well. Before we open it up for questions, I have Eric, then I have Beth, then I have Ben. I just want you to note that there are different ways to engage in the Michigan's new redistricting process. There's different ways to engage. The first way to engage is to please, and I want to say this very clearly, to please, please, please look at our website, our URL. Go to www.michigan.gov/micrc. There's a public comment portal there that was set up by the Michigan Department of State, who is the Secretary of Commission with no voice, that they have put together that was launched last week. You saw the press release that came out for the Michigan Department of State. It is an excellent tool, very intuitive tool. And we would like to thank Sally Marsh, the Director of Special Projects, who led out in that process for the Secretary of State and the team that worked with her in making this public comment tool available for people to respond. Once again, this public comment tool will take all the public comments as relates to redistricting. It will also, you can submit maps through this public comment tool as well. You can submit maps, you can comment on maps, questions. The tool is very intuitive, so just want to share that with you with regards to the public comment tool that is available. I also want you to know if you have information, we cannot, and I want to repeat this very clearly, we cannot accept public comments through the telephone. But if you have questions or you need information or start times, you can call a toll-free number, which is 833-968-3729. I repeat, 833-968-3729, or that stands for 833-U-Y-O-U-DRAW, 833-U-DRAW. If you don't have access to the internet or to the phone, you can mail the MICRC at PO Box 30318, and the zip code for Lansing, Michigan is 48909. I repeat, you can mail your public comments if you don't have access to the internet or the URL to get on the public portal tool. You can mail them to MICRCPOBOX30318, and the zip code is LANCY, Michigan, 48909. Our goal is to have 10,000, I repeat, 10,000 discreet public comments as it relates to Michigan's new redistricting process. Once again, our goal is to have 10,000, I repeat, 10,000 comments as it relates to Michigan's new redistricting process. If you want to sign up for alerts or emails, go to www.michigan.gov/micrc, and you can sign up for email alerts or text alerts. We limit our text alerts to five a week, and then you can get your emails as often as they come out as relates to what is taking place and how to engage in Michigan's Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission. We want to hear from you. We want to increase our awareness. We want to increase our engagement with you so that the maps that are adopted reflect the will of Michigan just as clearly as the 61.4% of voters who made the decision, an intentional decision, to ensure that citizens, like the citizens represented represented on the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission, draw the lines and not legislators or politicians. Without further ado, I would like to invite our guests, who were with us this morning, to show themselves as we engage in a question-and answering period with members of the media, who are our partners in ensuring that the message gets out across the state about Michigan's new redistricting process. Eric, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. With the meetings and hearings starting up soon, but not getting the full census data until August, September, when Michiganers turn or tune into these hearings, what exactly can they expect to be done? What kind of work can be done without the full numbers coming from the census later this summer?
Sue?
The public, the purpose of the public hearings is to listen, to listen to the people who have comments about what their communities of interest are and where they would like the lines to be drawn for their district. In fact, the commission cannot draw a single line until at least 10 public hearings take place. And our commission has, is made up of overachievers. So there will be 16 initial public hearings. So there will be no map drawing taking place in public hearings. This is a listening tour to listen to the people of the state of Michigan. Did I answer that adequately for you?
Eric, did you have any follow-up?
No, that works for that question. Yes, thanks.
All right, Beth?
Thanks, thanks for holding us. I have a few questions just about like the process. First of all, are you going to allow Zoom access to these meetings, either for people participating or for people wanting to watch? And then also, like, is this for people who, who want to express their belief of what a community of interest is or where the line should be drawn? Is, are these meetings their one shot to do so? And also, if I live in Flint and I want to go to a meeting in Gaylord, can I do that, or do I have to go to one in my local area?
I'm happy to answer that. Oops.
Oh, go ahead, Sue.
I'm happy to answer that. All meetings will be held via Zoom, so, and in person. So if someone wants to attend via Zoom, they can attend that way. They can watch on YouTube, like any other meeting of the commission. If they wish to come in person, they can give their public comment in person. If they wish to give virtual public comment, they can do that through the Zoom meeting. So there will be many opportunities for participation. You don't have only one opportunity to speak. If something happens in one of the early public hearings and you want to comment on that later on, you certainly may do that if interested. A person certainly may attend anywhere. But when they're speaking, we want them to be very clear about the community that they're representing. So the commissioners have a full understanding of the community that they're discussing and where they are interested in having those lines drawn. So it's just very important that they're very clear. We will also ask people making public comment if they're talking about a specific community or a specific area on the map to go to the public tool and put that area on the map so the commission is very clear about their information.
Beth, were your questions answered?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Ben?
Thank you, Edward. This question is for James, but I'd also like to have Sue Ann or Rebecca weigh in this as well. Commissioner, Commissioner Rhonda Lang from Reed City has during several meetings mentioned that she doesn't feel like the commission is doing enough outreach to rural communities. James, you know, you talked about your excitement to be a part of this process, but as someone who is a farmer, a municipal leader, and a business owner from that community, you feel like they've done enough in this early phase to probe for input? And even if that answer is yes, in what ways can they do more to reach those residents so they do indeed have a voice?
I, you know, my feeling is, my, my, obviously, not enough people are aware of what's going on. So somewhere, the reach, outreach isn't there yet. I get that part. Like I said, seeing Eric here, if I, I don't know all these people. I know some because I watch, you know, PBS, the weekend thing. But that almost Eric's the only one I know for sure is from somewhere north of GR. And the outreach needs to be through the media. So the media needs to be at events like this to at least bring the message out. And I think that's probably the key, at least for up here, why people maybe don't know, and maybe across the state. I'm, I'm so happy to see Eric. I'm kind of disappointed not seeing somebody, is anybody here from the Sioux or up in Marquette? You know, doing this kind of thing. So maybe the commission needs to be, you know, making more direct contact with regions they see not getting out in their press. And I know this is a challenge for all the press people too, the media people. But maybe that would be a suggestion from me to get that outreach. Trying to get people engaged, you know, somebody who's been involved in politics all his life, trying to get people engaged is a struggle, no matter what you're doing. And, but this is, this is like as important as it gets. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And then if Sue Ann or Rebecca would like to weigh in it too, so.
I am happy to weigh in. We offered an opportunity to any township or county to have a presentation to their commission meetings. So we, the commissioners and staff made over 80 presentations fairly recently. The League of Women Voters has been a phenomenal partner throughout the state. They've held, I believe, at least four town hall forums up in Traverse City and in northern Michigan. I see Tia is on board from Nagone, so welcome. So we're happy you're here too. This is the public, this is the press conference that launches our public hearings. Our PR consultants have been on board one week. We are keenly aware that the average person in the state of Michigan does not know that this commission exists and about how important this work is. So thank you to the media for being here today to help us to get that message out. From this day forward, the push really, really begins to have public hearings and to make sure this message is broadcast across the state about how important this process is and how people can get involved.
Commissioners of Teller, did you want to offer anything?
Yeah, I was just gonna, you know, also agree with the, the comment about the media. We did do some research into both awareness and mechanisms for receiving information. And the media was one of the key mechanisms that people throughout the state said that they relied on to learn their information. I mean, it, it was broken up by age group, but particularly among older rural citizens. The, the media and press reports are something that they follow pretty extensively in terms of getting their information. So, you know, part of that outreach is doing events like this, like this press release and other events where we're reaching out to media because that's going to be the most effective way of reaching not only rural areas, but urban areas as well, where people are unaware of what we are doing or how to participate.
I just want to reiterate, Ben, that we are working with the Michigan Farm Bureau Association. The Michigan State University Extension Center hosted a town hall forum a couple of months ago to share about the new process. And we're also working with them with regards to doing, working with their district directors across the state. In addition, we're working at working on the direct mail campaign. We're looking at identifying billboards in rural areas to help increase awareness. We are concerned about the digital divide. And as James has shared, the digital divide is different in rural areas versus urban areas. So that's why we're kind of looking at a direct mail campaign. But let me be clear. If there's anyone who has a connection in the rural areas that can assist us in getting out our message, call me. Call me. We don't want to leave anyone behind. And so we're going out there, we're trying to be proactive. But if we're missing a group or missing an opportunity, get in touch with me so we can make it happen. We do not want to leave anyone behind. We do not want anyone to miss out on this valuable information. And as much as we appreciate the press in helping us get the word out, we are not shrugging our role or our responsibility to make ourselves available in any rural area in Michigan to ensure that they're aware about this new redistricting process. You have a right, just as much as anybody else in any part of the state, to ensure that your voice is heard. So if anyone is out there that has a connection, might know a regional group that might not be a statewide group, you noticed our public hearing schedule? If we're out that way, we would love to meet with you, either in person or virtual. If we need to come back and schedule out another time, we would love to do it. We know that the hours are different. If it has to be 6:00 AM, not during normal business hours, 6:00 AM it is. If it has to be at night, and such as nine or 10 o'clock after the chores or whatever work needs to be done, we will make it happen. So please, 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 give us an opportunity, if we have not contacted you already, to ensure that you're aware of the redistricting process and how you can engage. Because we want everyone to be involved in this process. Thank you so much. Carol?
Good morning. Thanks for taking my question. A lot of the things that we're talking about today are, they sound fairly expensive, like sending mailers or hiring public relations firms and hosting hearings. How much do you plan to spend on outreach and hearings in this first round? And does the current budget for the commission look like it will cover those plans for the year?
Yes, the public hearing budget is $320,000 for the 16 public hearings. If you were at our meeting last week, you would have heard from our executive director where we have saved a projected $40,000. I repeat, $40,000 off of that $320,000 budget that has been redirected. As relates to the communications and outreach budget, it's also available on the website. Just want you guys to know, this is like civics. You know how we talk about civics and how everything has to be open and transparent? If you want to know what's going on with the commission, go to the website. Listen to the meetings. It is all right there, including the budget. Sue Hammer Smith did a tremendous job in presenting the budget and making the the adjustments that the commission has approved. And I want Commissioners of Teller to respond after I'm done with regards to that. Our communications outreach budget is $400,000, $400,000. And you can see what has been spent, what has been updated as a result of that. And Commissioners of Teller, if you can talk about the budget process that was just approved and recommended from our executive director, Sue Hammer Smith.
Yeah, so I mean, obviously, we, we have a fixed budget amount, and the commission is being careful with how we're allocating that money and planning. Executive Director Hammer Smith has been instrumental in helping us with that process. But, you know, we have a budget allocated for communications and outreach. I think that budget is reasonable based on the work that Edward has projected that we're going to be doing. And I think we have sufficient funds to make it through this year and to conduct the kind of outreach that we want to conduct to be able to reach as many people as we want so that we can get that participation that is so critical to the work that we're doing.
Carol, did you have any more questions? Or did that answer the question that you had?
It did. Thank you.
All right, let's see. Trying to give everyone a chance before we get back to Eric and Beth. Eli?
Thanks for letting me on. I had a couple of questions. I guess first is regarding language access and sign language interpretation, things like that. Are those available in documents or at these meetings? Will we have that kind of access?
Absolutely, absolutely. The same process that we have, you can call for Arabic and Spanish translation. And we also have sign language interpreter will be available at each and every one of our public hearings. If you go to our meeting notice on the website and you do not speak Spanish or Arabic but choose to address the commission, if you would respond accordingly, we will have an interpreter there to translate for you at each and every one of our public hearings, but also our weekly meetings. Language is not a barrier to making sure that your voice is heard. Let me repeat it again. Language is not a barrier to Language is not a barrier to ensure that your voice is heard. So Eli, I hope that answers your question.
I appreciate it. And uh, just as another question, I was wondering if there was any capacity limits in terms of whether it's the Zoom meeting or these in-person uh, public hearings?
The virtual, there's no capacity limit. Um, our in-person, depending on the venue, um, at each and every one of our venues, you will be required to wear a mask and to social distance. Once again, you will be required to wear a mask and to social distance. So um, those will be the requirements once we reach capacity. Um, obviously, people can be outdoors as they wait to address the commission. But um, our goal, once again, I want to be clear, is to ensure that everyone, whether virtual or in-person, will have an opportunity to address the commission and offer their public comments.
Eli, um, let me add a little bit to what Edward said regarding language access. Uh, obviously, the um, many communities, many immigrant communities um, may have a language access um, challenges. But for uh, many of these immigrant communities, um, Edward mentioned this is a civic education process. Uh, many of these immigrant communities come from places where the the fact that voting is a foreign concept, uh, the fact, and not only that, uh, the sophisticated process of of how we conducted our democracy here uh, is might be a difficult process. So we not only outreach in these communities and help with the language barriers. I I think we should also outreach and help with civic education and and the importance of this process.
Thank you for that. And I just had one other question. Um, I I think that concept of just redistricting in general is kind of a foreign concept for the common citizen. And I'm just wondering, um, just generally speaking, like what tools does the public have at their disposal? I mean, I know that we have this website where we can submit these these uh, map suggestions. But like in terms of actually drawing those lines, looking at those numbers, like what what's out there for the public to be able to do that?
Um, the public comment tool, Eli, is available, you know, off the website. It's um, uses Districtor. It's a very intuitive um, type of process. And it also has some YouTube video links to kind of explain it. Um, as you know, that actually works with equal population, um, whether it's for Michigan's congressional, Michigan House or Michigan Senate in terms of getting that um, limit in terms of equal population with regards to that. We'll be also doing some campaigns to assist the public. And as relates to how they can um, use the public comment tool and submit maps, not just for their um, congressional, senate or house, but also for their community of interest. And so that is um, part of this um, education process that we'll be doing throughout the state as we um, talk about the redistricting process. Um, Sue has her hand. Smith?
Yep, yes, Edward, thank you. I would just add that uh, the league is reaching out to people in their communities across the state who might be interested in testifying, how to draw the maps, how to use the tool that's on the website, uh, how to provide written testimony, how to speak at the public hearing. So anyone who would like some assistance in either um, submitting their testimony or or giving it at the public hearing, please reach out to your local league. We have trained people who are ready to help you with that endeavor.
And that not just, uh, in addition to the League of Women Voters, Michigan Nonprofit Association, Access, uh, Michigan NAACP and others are engaged in this process of making sure that people know how to draw the maps, how to provide public comments. Because let's face it, this work is bigger than you or I. This is a will of the voters. And we want to make sure that they have an opportunity to connect um, with organizations that they feel comfortable with connecting with and submitting their maps or their comments in their own way for the commission's consideration. So we're really, really, really um, want to thank our statewide organizational partners, but also uh, you in the media for allowing people to know how they can access um, this process and be engaged. So once again, we're not only looking to increase awareness, but also engagement. And I shared with you earlier, our goal is to get ten thousand discreet public comments. I just um, shared with you how you can sign up for emails and alerts so that people can be um, be or become aware. And uh, we just want to make sure people have that um, those options available to them. Um, Allison?
Hi, thank you. I have a couple of questions. Um, the first, I was wondering if you'd be able to give an update about the lawsuit to move um, the deadline for the final maps? Um, if if you have an update or how you're feeling about how that is going? Um, and I was also wondering if you would comment on how the process of forming an independent commission has been going um, during a time of hyper-partisanship?
All right, well, we will have Rebecca and Sue um, address that. Commissioners of Teller and Sue um, address those comments. And if maybe I can fill in.
I'm happy to um, comment about the filing with the Michigan Supreme Court. Uh, we did file for seventy-two days of relief in the districting deadlines. So as most of you probably know, um, the final maps were to be drawn by November first, according to the constitution. There was a forty-five day public comment period that starts forty-five days in advance of that, which would be September seventeenth. And we don't anticipate receiving final census data until September thirtieth. So that is the reason for requesting the relief. To my knowledge, there's been no response at this time from the Supreme Court. However, um, the request was recently filed. Um, and it was filed in collaboration with the Michigan Department of State, um, especially as regards the Bureau of Elections. So I'll let Rebecca uh, speak as to the process of the commissioners um, uh, and and the culture that has um, grown out of the commission.
Yeah, thank you, Sue. Um, so we're in the middle of pandemic, which obviously makes things challenging. So the commission isn't getting together in a room where we can interact like we would normally do outside of of pandemic times. But that being said, I mean, I realize that um, to some extent, the world feels hyper partisan, particularly the United States. I think that also depends on your perspective. I think that individuals online can maybe be more hyper partisan than they are dealing with people face to face. And so we're interacting with each other as a commission. I personally don't see that there's any hyper-partisanship that we've experienced. It's honestly difficult for me. If you were to ask me who's a Republican, who's an independent, who's a Democrat, I wouldn't be able to tell you off the top of my head because I don't see those lines being drawn within the commission. I think we all get along well. I think we all respect each other and we're all respecting the process. And we're all um, appreciative of the role that we have and how important it is. And we're honored by it and um, working together as a team to accomplish this this very important goal that's been put on our shoulders by the Michigan voters.
Allison, were your questions answered?
Yep, thank you so much.
All right, um, Sergio?
Good morning, everyone, and thanks for hosting us this morning. I have two questions. The first one is going back to something that Ben asked earlier about, you know, um, these smaller presentations, uh, that Director Hammer Smith was talking about. Can you share a little bit more about who can get those presentations? Um, what's what's the process to to get one of those? And also, um, can people submit public comments at those smaller presentations? And then my my second question is about, you know, the online portal to submit comments. I know a lot of the information to submit, the comment is optional, like a last name, but you need an email. How or what's the system to make sure that that email or that information that is meant to be kept private is kept private, in fact?
Okay, on the website, Sergio, you can submit. Um, there's a, if you want to request a presentation, you can click on that and provide the details. And anyone, anywhere um, in the state can get a presentation. It doesn't matter um, how many people come or the size of your organization. If you um, click on that and submit, um, we're doing, you know, we're doing presentations. All of our commissioners are involved and engaged in presentations. Matter of fact, we're doing a presentation tonight. Um, Commissioners of Teller is doing a presentation tonight along with Commissioner Doug Clark, along with Commissioner um, Brittany Cullum and Commissioner Juanita Curry um, with the statewide NAACP chapter. And they just simply made a request. League of Women Voters is with us today and they're doing town hall forums all across the state. They just simply made a request. So um, that's what we're, that's all you have to do is just simply make a request and we will do it. Um, virtually has been the, um, because of the pandemic, has been how we've done most of our presentations, but we're also willing to come in person.
Can people submit public comment at those presentations?
No, in order to submit public comments, you can either do it through the um, URL, which is www.michigan.gov forward slash M I C R C. Or you can mail it in. If you don't have internet access, you can mail it to M I C R C, P O Box three oh three one eight, Lansing, Michigan, four eight nine zero nine.
And it's not that we don't want to receive public comment. The commission is very, very specific about how public comment can be received. So we are basically prohibited from accepting it in those forums. Um, we want the public comment tool to be used so it can be adequately captured also. I mean, which is critically important. Random conversations aren't going to help. Um, it needs to be in a public comment tool or in a public hearing where the whole commissioner hears it in an open and transparent process. That's the key.
Are your questions answered, Sergio?
Got it. I guess the the last question was more about, you know, on- online, you're supposed to include your email. And I'm wondering, uh, you can explain a little bit, you know, the security protocols or the system in place to ensure that that email is not made public when people submit their information?
It will not, emails will not be made public. It's an internal option for the public comment tool to discern unique IP addresses. So one person doesn't submit a thousand comments and and achieve higher weight than a unique IP address that submits a public comment.
Got it. Thank you so much, Director Hammer Smith.
All right, um, let's see. Lauren and then Claire?
Hi, uh, two, uh, somewhat related questions. First, uh, what's the best case scenario for tomorrow? Is there a target number that the commission's hoping to hit or an ideal um, amount of public comments that might come in on this first hearing? And then, uh, are there any time limits on um, how long an individual can speak or on how long tomorrow's meeting is going to go?
Um, for, um, first of all, in order to register for public comments, if you're going to do it virtually, you have to do it by noon. And if you're going to be in person, you have to do it by eight o'clock PM. Um, the commission will set the time limit at the meeting, but it's estimated that it might be about two minutes. Um, in terms of an actual audience projection, um, we're projecting possibly a hundred people um, in the Jackson area to participate. We would love to have more. But um, I just, I I I don't want to say a number as it, because it doesn't really relate to success. Because you can receive comments anytime throughout the public hearing process and people can travel anywhere um, during the public hearing process. So if today is, tomorrow's not a good day and they decide to come to the one in Lansing or they decide to come to the one in Kalamazoo, you know, our 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 goal is to have ten thousand discreet public comments, whether they're in person, whether they're virtual, whether people come to the public hearing or don't come to public hearing, that is our goal. And so if you're looking at, well, how are you measuring success? Let me be clear, we're measuring success by getting ten thousand discreet public comments, not by attendance, but um, ten thousand discreet public comments. And having said that, we want to make sure that we are available um, to the citizens. I mean, our commission are everyday citizens. I mean, they're just like you. I mean, the conversations they have have to be an open, the deliberations they have to have are open. And so it's like being at your kitchen table with cameras to hear how the um, commission deliberates. But um, once again, our measure of success, just so we're clear, is to obtain ten thousand discreet public comments. We know everyone may not want to come out because of a pandemic. We also know that people may have transportation issues or competing issues such as Little League, soccer, you know, school, graduation seasons, all this stuff is happening right now. And so we would never, ever limit ourselves to measuring success by the attendance of who comes to the public hearing, but rather by the comments that we receive. And that's why we're trying to make sure we provide every avenue as possible for people to submit public comments, not knowing their schedules, but ensuring that they have the opportunity for their voices to be heard as relates to Michigan congressional, house and senate districts, but also their communities of interest. Um, Commissioners of Teller or um, Director Sue, if there's anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, this is a, um, you know, a bit like like having a party where you don't have an RSVP requirement. Um, you know, I think we're going to have a better feel for how many people are going to attend after we do the first event. But um, you know, it's all unknown. This is, this has never been done before in Michigan. We've done our best to advertise it and hopefully we get a good participation. But in terms of how many people actually show up, um, we're just gonna, it's almost a wait and see situation to see how many people appear in person. Um, I think particularly because we're in the middle of a pandemic, that might impact things to some degree. But I I'm hopeful and excited and I'm hoping that we have a good number of people there to give us our feedback because we need that feedback to do our job.
Any other question, Lauren?
That answered it. Thank you.
All right, Clara?
Thank you, Edward. So first, I have a quick question for you. And sorry if I missed this earlier. Is that toll-free number you gave also an option for providing comment as well? And then my second question is for either Director Hammer Smith or Commissioners of Teller. If the commission hears the same kind of input over and over again about a community of interest, is that feedback going to be weighted more heavily during the map making process than just a standalone comment from one person? And how is the commission going to determine whether that standalone comment isn't just the result of not enough people in a community knowing about the commission's work?
Thank you, Clara. The first question was like a California softball. And I just want to appreciate you for giving that question to me because the other question was like hitting a golf ball from a pitcher's mound that Commissioners of Teller and Director Hammer Smith will have to answer. The one eight hundred, one eight, the toll-free number and eight three three, not eight hundred, eight three three, you draw, eight three three, you draw, that's eight three three nine six eight three seven two nine. That number is for information only. Answer questions, provide information. We will not, cannot accept public comments on that number. So just want to make sure if you have information like, well, what time's the public hearing? Or or if, how do I get a town hall schedule? You know, we will answer just basic questions and provide information from there. Uh, more than likely, we will probably, if you have internet access, we will push you to our website. Because as Commissioner Teller said earlier, the two places people will go for re-engagement and for engagement are you, the news media, and then the second place is our website. I mean, the research was very clear in that. And once again, our website is www.michigan.gov forward slash M I C R C. If by chance you're looking for a media kit or you're looking for an outreach kit so that you can um, interact with the media, talking about redistricting or trying to learn how to do a better outreach in your neighborhood or your community or even your community of interest, you will also be able to access that information later today off the website. So that was my California softball answer for the question you provided, Clara, and I thank you for that. And so now the people who are in the hot seat can take on the next one. Commissioners of Teller and then our executive director, Sue Hammer Smith.
Thank you, Clara. I I'd love to give you a nice pat answer on that. Um, but I think the answer is we haven't decided yet as a commission. Um, you know, all of our meetings are open. We did have some discussion about a week or so ago about how we are going to weigh things. And there was no resolution on that in that meeting. You can certainly watch it yourself. Um, we are aware that there may be situations where we have to weigh Um, we are aware that there may be situations where we have to weigh. Um, and, and balance comments against each other and decide which is more pressing and which is not. Um, but we have not reached that point right now. Our focus right now is just getting the feedback. And once we have the feedback and we can evaluate what we have, at that point, the commission as a group. Will decide, okay, how are we going to weigh the feedback that we've received? Um, but we haven't, we haven't crossed that bridge yet. So I'd say look for that in the future, but for right now, our, our primary focus is just soliciting the feedback and then. The, the analysis of how we're gonna interpret the feedback and what weight we're gonna give to it. That's gonna be something that's gonna have to come down the road. Once we have the feedback and, um, something to evaluate.
Does that answer it for you, Clara? Again, we're going on a listening tour. That's, that's, that's the job for the next eight weeks. Is for the commission to listen to that, um, public comment.
Great, I appreciate it. And just one quick follow-up, then, uh, building on one of the common themes here, I'd assume it ma- it would make your job a lot easier. If you had widespread participation across communities to. Weigh that feedback and make sure that it's, uh, you're getting as much as possible. And it, you're not disproportionately hearing from people just because they happen to know about the process. Yeah, absolutely. The more feedback we receive, the better, um, the broader, the depth of the feedback we receive, the better. Um, if, if people aren't making comments to us, um, then we're not aware of their concerns. So we really do need people. To, to weigh in, to provide their maps, provide their feedback through whatever means they're most comfortable with. Whether that's writing us a letter, using the public comment tool, showing up at a meeting, whatever that means is to get the feedback to us. We really, we really are relying on the people to participate in this process. It was designed to be participatory. And we need that public feedback to do our jobs adequately.
Great, thank you.
All right, um, Eric?
Yeah, I just had another question. There's a lot of talk earlier about rural areas and getting them involved in this process. But, uh, when I've been talking to people up in northern Michigan, a lot of people haven't been interested in this because. When you look at the maps, uh, and you talk about gerrymandering, it's mostly southeast Michigan. And up in northern and the western Michigan and the thumb, it's just big blocks of districts. So you don't really see that much of an impact. So they're not as worried about it or as interested because not much changes. Why should people in rural areas be connected and interested into such a commission? If they don't expect much to change?
Well, what I've heard, um, Eric, from those, from those areas is more of an interest in how their state house and state senate districts. Are configured. Um, I, I, I've, I've heard you saying some, um. The same comments or sentiments that you shared as relates to the congressional district. And I get that, but, um, um, the concerns that I've heard are more or less related to how their house. As well as their, um, senate districts are configured and any particular, um, community of interest. And so as our executive director shared earlier, you know, this is a listening tour to ensure that we're hearing correctly. Now, if people are happy, you know, we don't want to assume that silence means consent. You know, but please share with us if that is the case because the whole idea of a listening tour. Is to actually hear, not assume, not try to justify, not trying to interpret what people want. But to actually hear what they want so that when the commission goes into deliberations. Their voices are considered appropriately and adequately. Thank you. Beth?
Thanks. Um, what's, when it comes to these public hearings, what's the level of participation of the political parties in this process? Like, will the commission consider comment from, from political activists considering that. They, they can't necessarily draw districts around political preferences, um, I, I guess, how will, will that input be weighted?
Yeah, well, I'm assuming they're citizens, correct?
Correct. But I mean, if you know that they're coming at this with a political bent, will it be given less weight because of that?
Um, I think the idea of this Michigan Independent Citizens, um, Redistricting Commission. Is to reflect the will of the citizens. And just because someone is associated with a political party. It does not eliminate them from being a citizen. And so the commission is responsible for taking each and every, um, comment from the citizens seriously. As it deliberate, as they deliberate and at the end of redistricting process, as you know, this operates as a commission. Yes, there are four Democrats. Yes, there's four Republicans. Yes, and five independents. But they speak, um, in one voice and representing the will of the people of Michigan that voted this proposal. Um, of almost two years ago. So, um, granted, people may know different names more so than others. But the benefit about having a commission is that it doesn't give weight based upon your title or your office. The weight it gives is called respect to each and everyone that addresses and has comment. Because they're citizens of Michigan who have a right and an opportunity for the first time in history. To provide comments about Michigan's new redistricting process. And for that to happen at sixty-one point four percent of the voters of Michigan that wanted that. Made an intentional decision to have it is tremendous. And our commission is, is looking and willing to honor that trust that has been placed in them. To ensure everyone is heard with the common principle of respect. Because you're a citizen of Michigan. I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out to cover today's event. We planned for thirty-five minutes and it's now a little bit over an hour. Just want to reiterate that if you want to know more about Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission. To please visit W W W dot Michigan dot gov forward slash M I C R C. If you have information, you cannot provide public comments, but if you have questions, you can call toll-free. Eight three three, you draw, eight three three, you draw. That's eight three three nine six eight three seven two nine. At this time, I would like to thank, um, our consultants who are working with us on this project. I'm so grateful. And if we can have Maureen Saxton and Darcy McConnell to come, um, to join us. Uh, Maureen Saxton represents Van Dyckhorn Public Relations and Darcy McConnell represents McConnell Communications. They will be working with us throughout this process. Uh, McConnell Communications in southeast Michigan. And then, um, Van Dyckhorn, um, every place else outside of southeast Michigan. But there are dynamic firms working together with us to ensure everyone is aware. Of the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission. Because we want to increase awareness and engagement in this new process. And finally, last but not least, we'd like to thank our partners who are with us. We'd like to thank Hassan. We'd like to thank Sue Smith. We'd like to thank James. We'd like to thank Yvonne for being with us today. We greatly appreciate, um, your support and continued support as we increase awareness and engagement in this process. Like to thank our vice chair of the commission, um, Rebecca Zatella and our executive director, my boss, Sue Anne Hammer Smith. For being with us today. Once again, we look forward to seeing each and every one of you tomorrow as we kick off the public hearings in Jackson. At six o'clock P M at the American One Event Center. Thank you again so much for being with us and thank you, members of the press, for your invaluable efforts. In helping us to get the word out about this new redistricting process. We would not be successful without you and that's why we are committed to this openness and transparency. And if you haven't, um, been able to be a part of it, you know, for the last few weeks, um, Clara Henderson. Um, I see Sergio, I see Lauren and others. We do a press briefing after every, every. Commission meeting so that you can be up to date and aware what's taking place. Um, during the public hearing process, our press briefings will be taking place live at each facility. At four o'clock P M, starting tomorrow at Jackson at the American One Event Center. Once again, our press briefings will be in person and live at four o'clock P M. Each day of the public hearings at the host location. Once again, thank you so much for being with us and we extend to you the blessings of a great evening and a good day. Goodbye, everyone.